We are a little shorthanded up here tonight, as you can see, and so we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll do a couple other things. If you would join me in saluting the flag.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, could you call the roll?
Our newest member, Member Keeney.
Present.
Member List.
Present.
Member Wolf. Member Saragosa. Member Frem.
Present.
Staff notices the Chair pro tem is not here this evening. Therefore, one of the first actions that we're going to request is that among the three of you is to elect a temporary chair this evening to conduct tonight's meeting.
Move Commissioner List.
Move the second.
Motion.
I have this train whistle on my phone.
Yes, sir.
Should I play it?
No, that's fine. Let's, we'll go with that.
Seat of honor.
I guarantee I will not be as smooth as our chair, but we'll see if we can make our way through this tonight. Excuse me for just one moment.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Staff would actually like to pull item 1.1 related to tonight's agenda. Due to the presentation that we have this evening and the billable time that the consultant that this city is working with, we thought it best to move that item so that it's heard after the communications, item number four, so it would serve as item five. And then the current item five, one, five-two, five-three would be renumbered as six-one, six-two, and six-three.
We okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
My motion is amended as necessary to accommodate staff. If I could get a friendly second?
Second.
Okay. By common consent, we're good on that. Items of interest from the public. If you are here and you have an item of interest for the commission that is not on the agenda tonight, you may step up to the microphone and address the committee. I do want you to know that I love the time clock, and I will hold you to three minutes. If you would please, if it's your choice, you may state your name.
Good evening, Commissioner. Did you just move six-one up?
Six-point-one.
Okay. Because I have to get back to work, but I did have comments I wanted to submit for that, so just wanted to get those on the record now.
All right. Anyone else? Item number four, communications. Do we have any communications from staff?
No, we do not.
Moving on to item number six-point-one, excuse me, five-point-one, which was moved up from six-point-one, Placerville area's parks and facilities master plan update. And I'll refer to the staff for this portion.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Steve Yule. I'm the Director of Community Services for the City of Placerville, and we're currently going through a master plan update that you may or may not be familiar with. Hopefully, you all got my staff report. It provides an overview of the process and where we're at with that. Tonight, we're asking that the commission help us make a recommendation, that being the Recreation and Parks Commission ratifying the 2017 Placerville area master plan, and for you to help us make a determination as whether it is consistent with the city's general plan or not. To help me tonight, Kate Kirsch, Director of Foothill and Associates, who's helping facilitate this project, is here to give you an overview of where we stand right now in that process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kate, and she'll fill us in.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Can you hear me all right? Okay. As Steve mentioned, we are in the process of doing a limited update to the Parks and Recreation master plan, and my presentation up there can, I hope everyone can see that all right. The last Parks and Recreation master plan was completed in 2009. This particular update is focused specifically on updating those elements that relate to inventory and demographics and level of service in anticipation of the city modifying the park development impact fee and doing some revisiting or looking again at your, how your Quimby ordinance is being implemented. So it was necessary for the master plan to have current information in order for that activity to move forward. The master plan that, the area that the master plan covers is the City of Placerville as well as some of the unincorporated communities that also use the facilities that the City of Placerville provides. So it's not just the city, but it's the whole plan area. We updated just specific sections of the master plan, as identified here, and I'll go into what those updates were in the subsequent slides. And as I mentioned before, this updated plan will provide the basis for the impact fee and Quimby fee studies that are forthcoming. Let's see. In terms of the inventory section, some minor updates since 2009 plan. Duffy Park is open now. The county has added a Forbay Park up in Pollock Pines to their inventory. We've updated some of the Class One bike multi-use trail mileages, and then there are a few minor inventory adjustments to some of the county facilities. We also looked at the programs and updated the participation numbers showing the most recent, last three years. We took a look at all of the different kind of categories of classes and where there were declines and increases by whether it's youth, adult, youth sports camps, aquatics, and sports leagues, to figure out if the demand was still there and if the programs were being adequately kind of modified to reflect changing demand, and made recommendations along those lines. We updated the demographic section as well. Some interesting facts from that exercise, that there was actually an overall decline in the total plan area population between 2006 and 2012, due, as I'm sure no one is surprised, to the economic recession that occurred during that time. As of 2017, though, the overall population has increased by two percent from the 2009 level. SECOG, which is our Sacramento Area Council of Government Regional Planning Entity, they're projecting a 10 percent population increase by 2032 for the entire plan area, but a higher increase in the City of Placerville over that same time period of 17 percent. So the projection is that we will continue to see development focused in the more, the area where there's more urbanized services available to residents. Some of the age group distribution changes from 2000 to 2015, trending pretty much consistent with what we're seeing throughout the county. Minor decline in those people who are 20 years and under, that's seven percent decrease, decrease in the 20 to 49 at 5.1 percent, and then basically that difference being made up by the 50 and older. So it's pointing to the increase of older residents as being a larger percentage of the population. The result of that, in terms of where our communities are made up, is that we are seeing that residents are choosing to age in place, and that this is an attractive location for retirees. People are drawn to this region. We did also note a slight decline in home ownership of about four percent. Again, I think an artifact of the economic recession, as more people, people lost their homes, and more people are in a renting rather than owning situation. And then we did see some continued uptick in cultural diversity, which is going to increase in a slow, slow but steady rate, with Hispanic population being the single group that seems to be increasing the most. Based on this information, we're anticipating that the demand for programs across all the age groups will continue to be strong in the future. We also looked at land use and growth, which is sort of a new section for the plan that hadn't really been analyzed much before. As you probably know, the general plan housing element identified Placerville's share of additional housing units that were needed by 2023 for regional housing as being 321 units. In addition, the city has identified some acreage for potential rezone that could accommodate about 485 housing units. And then there are current projects, 664 housing units and about almost 176,000 feet of commercial development that are being reviewed for potential implementation. The 2017 vacant land inventory done by the city, in addition to show space for up to 635 new housing units of various types, and I want to make sure people understand this includes multifamily housing as well as single-family housing, so some of the, some of these would be rather high-density as opposed to traditional single-family housing projects. But the big take-home message behind all that is that, you know, as the population increases in Placerville, if in fact all of these potential new developments were to occur, we'd have over another, almost 3,200 people living in Placerville, and those 3,200 people are going to want to be using the same parks, the same facilities that the existing population is using, which means there has to be some provision put in place to provide additional park and recreation facilities to meet that new need. Otherwise, the level of service to existing residents will be impacted. There was a lot of public input done in 2009 for the master plan. We did a kind of follow-up public meeting this time around to get any current, up-to-date input from the community. We basically found that the priorities and issues were very much the same as identified in 2009, but we did identify specific recommendations for facilities, programs, trails, and operations, and those are identified in the plan. But overall, we didn't hear a lot of different or new recommendations or needs in the community that weren't captured already in the 2009 process. One of the things that this master plan does is establish what's called a level of service, or an LOS, because this level of service, whoops, I think I missed a slide or two. Sorry about that. Somebody squeak at me next time I don't do that. I have it in front of me, so I'm sort of assuming you all do too. The level of service is important because that provides the foundation upon which new development impact fees will be calculated. So it's important that that is up to date. We have added a level of service standard for trails at .55 miles per thousand, and that's based on the existing inventory of trails. It combines a combination of Class One paved as well as natural surface trails. The city already has an acreage standard of five acres of neighborhood and community park per thousand, and you are currently meeting that standard per the general plan. We did find that Eldorado County continues to be deficit, specifically in neighborhood parks, in those areas of the plan that are not within city limits, and they're continuing to look at ways to try and address that issue. We also added some new facility standards for popular types of amenities that we did get from the public input meeting, specifically the dog park and some kind of bike or pump track. And again, these facilities are expressed as one facility per so many thousand people that you could be expected to serve. We removed the facility standard for football field because that's a need that's really being taken care of through the schools. It's not something that the city needs to really provide. And then we noted that the need, as in 2009, continues for a group of other facilities, various kinds of sport courts and fields, and community center, gymnasium, and group picnic areas. The final part of the master plan update really provides specific recommendations for improvements to individual parks, and I'm summarizing those here, but generally they fall into a couple of major categories. Thank you. ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act improvements are needed at Benham Rotary, Lyons, Goldbug, and Lumsden. Some capital maintenance/repair type deferred maintenance projects have also been identified for Lyons, Goldbug, and Lumsden. New playground equipment over at Orchard Hill Park, a shade structure at Duffy Park. And then we did take out of the pending recommendations things that have been completed since the last master plan, so there is progress being made on implementing those projects that were identified in 2009. All in all, from a fiscal point of view, there's about $3.5 million in facility improvements that have been identified over 10 years, and that's an inflation-adjusted number. The operating costs, that's separate from these capital projects, over that 10 years, again, adjusted for inflation, is about 23.9. So on average, you can do the math, it's pretty straightforward, additional revenues that are needed for facility improvements over that 10-year period averages about $350,000 per year, which is approximately a 15 percent increase over the current revenue sources. So that means, in order to implement these master plan visions, different revenue sources are going to have to be cultivated, and a number of those sources, grants, expanded fees, sponsorships, et cetera, are discussed in the master plan in terms of what they can and cannot be used for, and what some of their opportunities and restrictions might be.
Point of clarification before you move on. That's $23.9 million?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If only it was just $23.9, I would pay that for you. So in terms of the next steps, having done the update to the plan, we have presented the update already to the Rec. Commission last month. They had a few comments which we have incorporated into the document. Any comments or edits resulting from this evening's meeting will pass through staff and come to me, and we'll make those document updates. It will be presented in, I guess that's three weeks from today, to the City Council, and then we'll get a final document incorporating their comments as well by October 3rd. And at that point, Blair Oz, who's also a subconsultant working with me from SCI, he is going to take that draft plan and start calculating what the draft impact fee and the analysis of the Quimby ordinance, and he will be back in front of the Parks Commission, the Planning Commission, and City Council on those dates, October, November, and December, with the goal to present at the December meeting of the City Council the final fee studies and the master plan for adoption. So that's where we are. You have any questions? Anything I can answer?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will now go to anyone from the public that would like to respond, or seeing none, we will move on. Back to our staff.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. At this point, we'll still be taking comment, and so if you have any further comments that come out, come up after the fact or whatnot, we still have time to incorporate that into the plan, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and bring it back to you in a few months here.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be clear on what the motion is this evening, and we're essentially supposed to find consistency with the work that's been done so far with the general plan. That's all that's being asked this evening?
That's correct.
We did receive some handwritten comments here, but it's my inclination that these comments, I think the comments are actually good and they're germane, but would probably be more appropriate for the final document, because I presume a final document is going to come to Parks, and then to Commission, and then to Council. Is that the process?
Correct.
Yeah. And we had a, we had a joint Council and Planning Commission meeting on this very topic some months ago, if I recall, and I think a timeline was specified during that presentation, but I don't recall what it is, so perhaps it would be a good thing to mention. And now that you're at the podium, I realize I did have a couple of questions.
Sure. I did want to clarify, though, Steve, that the, we're, this is, the draft plan is in front of you. We're taking the comments and incorporating them as we go, so that the final document is being presented to, well, the draft is also being presented to City Council with their, their comments will be incorporated. Then the, what will be presented back again to the Parks Commission, the Planning Commission, and the City Council will be, that'll be the final document, but that will also have the park impact fee draft analysis at the same time. Hope that's clear.
But at that point, will that document still be subject to modification based upon comment and review that this body might offer, or the public might offer?
The master plan update or the park impact fee study? They're two separate documents.
Well, the study in of itself, the study's the study, but the plan will have recommendations or a pathway to do certain things. My question is, do we, are we supposed to be taking action this evening on what you've done so far and give a nod yes or no? Because that, if that's the case, then this has not been properly agendized. The, that's why I asked the question. The agenda item here is that the work so far is consistent with the general plan.
Correct.
If we're supposed to be taking more specific action of the plan itself, then this wasn't duly noticed, and that's a very specific and important distinction, I think, in terms of what we're supposed to do tonight, number one, and where, what the pathway is for this, number two.
Sure. So the way that the study, the impact fee study and the park master plan work together, the study is subject to, it'll propose certain ideas and certain things based on what the master plan says. So when they both come to you, if there's something that you feel needs to be modified, either in the master plan because you don't like the way that it is carrying, being carried forward into the fee study, or the fee study needs to be modified to do something different, then you would comment on those at that time. So this is not your last opportunity to provide those kinds of comments.
Okay. So that gives me a lot of comfort, then.
Okay.
And so one of the, one of the comments that was submitted, for example, says that, well, perhaps we may, we need to reprioritize what it is that we want to do, maybe, maybe the cost is beyond our means, and we should look at prioritizing that and do, approaching it a different way. And I'm not saying I agree or disagree with the comment. I'm just saying, at what point in the process does, do comments like this, will they have an opportunity to be aired? And I'm understanding that tonight's not the only opportunity for that kind of feedback to be presented. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm assuming that those were the written comments that were provided.
Yes, yes.
I'm sure Steve will be collecting those comments, as well as any that you individually may have, plus whatever we get from City Council, and we'll try to incorporate those, and then when we come back to you again and say, here's what we've done with those comments. Do you have anything further to add? And then we'll just keep it moving forward.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I had two questions I wanted to ask you specifically that I had forgotten. Do, what do you have in the way of, if any, demographic data in terms of the projected population change in Placerville?
In terms of numbers?
No, no, demographics.
So not, not population, but the makeup?
Yes, the makeup. And I know you did mention that one of the bullets in the slide said that the aging population are aging in place, and that's a terrible word, aging, but the maturing population are aging in place, and also they're attempting to relocate here. So that in and of itself is a sort of demographic, and I'm just curious about what other demographic information we might have, because I think the point that you made was, we're going to have 3,200 plus or minus more people projected here, and they are going to be competing or wanting to use the facilities that are here for the already-present population. And so I think the demographic data becomes very important in terms of what we prioritize, looping back to one of the suggestions, such as dog parks and trails versus basketball courts, for exam, just throwing those out as examples to get a contrast. So do we have any kind of projected demographic data as to the population increase?
The demographics that we have point to the older age group continuing to be a larger part of the population, and there is some of that broken out in the master plan. We know that there will be an increasing amount of cultural diversity coming into the area, but the challenge with some of those demographics is then trying to figure out what does that mean in terms of specific demand for both facilities and programs. So even though we know that there will be a higher percentage of older people in the community, or that the presence of older people in the community will continue to be a significant part of the community, we ask ourselves, are they going to want something different than what the rest of the community wants? And interestingly, a lot of the older people who are here are very active, are very capable and engaged, and so they are participating in the adult recreation programs that Steve's staff is already offering, and annually, that group looks at what they're offering and recalibrates to meet whatever the changing needs and changing trends are. There's not a clear, hard and fast correlation always between age and income and, you know, language and education in terms of specifically what people want. So I, I'm not trying to avoid the question, but I don't want people...
No, no, it's fine. Actually, you've led me, and you lead me to another question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, actually, two. Do we, what do we have in the way of demographic data on current park usage? Who's using the parks? And the trails, I believe the trails are included as part of the park structure, right?
That's correct.
And so my personal observation is, the trails are very heavily used, bicyclists, walkers, skateboarders, and other annoyances. That's a joke. But there's a lot of people on the trails, okay? Then yet some of the parks I see, I use it more like vagrancy, okay? So, and are those, are those taken in as part of the demographic? Because I think it's really important when we're thinking about adding parks and trying to figure out who's going to be using them, and you have to balance it with the build it and they will come, right? Going back to the older population, well, maybe the older population aren't using the facilities so much because we don't have a lot of things that attract them. I mean, I don't know one way or the other. So I think it's really essential that we understand the demographics of who's using... So I think it's really essential that we understand the demographics of who's using the facilities and programs, I want to come back to that in just a second, now, and where that need might be. So I'll just ask, just briefly, do we have that kind of data on whose demographics, on who's using the facilities now?
I would let Steve answer that question.
Yes, that's something that we work on all the time. We have surveys that go out to all of our user groups. We have extensive database for all of our rec side, all the recreation programs.
And is that published? Is that data that's published or available to us? Because I mean, for me personally, as a commissioner, I mean, that's data I would definitely use in making an evaluation, because I don't want to simply read it, you know, get the document and say, well, that looks really nice and pretty. And it is nice and pretty. But how do I know, how can I make an assessment as to whether or not it's meeting the need, right? Because I'd like to understand what the need is. So at some point, perhaps that information could come to us, and I think anybody reviewing the plan may be interested in it. And then I have one more question, and then I'll be quiet, I promise. You mentioned, there's a real mention between programs and facilities. And so I would view facilities as infrastructure, right? Equipment, locations and equipment, trails, I would consider a facility, so on and so forth. In a program, are activities and things that are structured and designed, right? And I would certainly hope that people who are participating in programs, that there should be a fee for the program. That the government will provide facilities for public use, but, you know, the programs, in my view, just my personal view, are kind of above and beyond, and they can be self-funding. They can be self-supporting through, at least in part, not entirety, but certainly in part for the people who are actually directly using them. As opposed to using a building impact fee, for example, to, you know, fund the program that only a limited number of people are using. That's just my personal preference, but...
I'll comment that a building impact fee cannot be used to fund a program.
Oh, well, that's a very good point.
So it can only be used to develop recreation facilities within the restrictions of the legislation. And then, in terms of fees, fees are currently charged for people to participate in programs. And if you do look at the detailed financial part of this plan, you'll see that fee generation is one of the most significant revenue sources for the parks and recreation system. So, I don't know. Steve, if you want to add anything more to that?
Yeah, Commissioner Friend, your personal opinion is consistent with the directive from city council that all of our programs are self-sufficient.
Great. And thank you for your indulgence, everyone.
Do you have anything?
No.
I have just a couple of comments and a couple of questions. In the report, it talks about an effective park planning calls for the park to be within a half mile of the users' residence. Yet the majority of the parks in the city are on the east side of the town. As an observation, on the corner of Middletown and Cold Springs, that's 14 acres, which would make a wonderful regional park for the west side of Placerville. The second item I have is this, that we say that there are grants available. What grants have the, has the city applied for in terms of parks? I'll ask the director, yeah.
The most recent one would be Reberti Zeeberg, state grant funding. And then we've also been quite successful with gas tax money for trails lately.
How about any private funding, any... As an example, I did a little bit of, very little research, and I found that the Heinz family trust is very interested in parks. Has that been tapped in? Any, and I'm using that as an example, but any private organizations or trusts that grants have been written to?
Not recently. Our Goldbug Park Development Committee is highly active in the grant writing process. And so most of the efforts have been towards trails, which the city's been successful with, and development at Goldbug Park.
Okay. And then the other item is this, thinking outside the box, why can't we have a section of the walking trail and the railroad on the existing rail lines? Why do we have to abandon the rail line to have a walking trail or not have a walking trail and have the rail? We have a lot of people that are interested in the walking, the railroad trails being taken out, tracks being taken out just east of town here, or west of town, excuse me, to put in a walking path. Why can't we have both on the same right-of-way?
I can speak to the city's portion of the Eldorado Trail that runs through the city of Placerville, and we're built out. So I can't speak for the county on what they plan to do with the corridor. Maybe Kate could speak more specifically because she's well in tune with what's going on, not only within the city, but also the county.
Okay.
Thank you. You're speaking, I believe, about the Sacramento-Placerville transportation corridor, which is the rail lines. And my understanding is that the county is continuing to allow, the rails are not being taken out, that they're putting in a Class 1 bike trail from Missouri Flat down to about Eldorado Road, and also natural trail, which is an unpaved trail, within that same right-of-way, and that the rails are not coming out. So, I know it's gone back and forth and back and forth over time, but I think currently where it's at is that the rails are remaining in place in support of some of the railroad museum interpretive interests and excursion use as well.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
I do have a question. Maybe this is better for you, Steve. Can you hear me? Okay. I just want to be clear that this update plan doesn't either commit us or limit us to, commit us to any particular improvements or programs, nor does it limit us to any new things that might come available within the life of this particular update.
It does not commit you to any future improvements at this time. It just provides a roadmap for staff moving forward within the community.
So comments, just like we heard that there's, you know, a possibility on the west side of town that's not named specifically in this document, if that becomes a more viable opportunity, it still would fit within the parameters of this plan that you're asking us to approve tonight?
Oh, sure. Yeah. It's just a priority list, and typically those that have funding are raised to the top.
And then things that are mentioned in this plan aren't necessarily, we're not committed to actually, you know, finding all the money to pay for things like a community center.
Absolutely. The list that you saw earlier kind of indicates that there was a long list of capital improvement projects in the last master plan, and I think we accomplished four or five of those.
Okay.
Along with other ones that weren't in the plan, so, yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I'm going to open it up.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to open it up for public comment at this time.
Good evening, Planning Commission, and congratulations, Chris, on being appointed to the Planning Commission. I had a question that came up because I think you sort of, nobody wanted to speak on it, and then there was more discussion. But when you say comments will be included in it, and maybe the question is for Steve, if one person makes a comment, I didn't know if that goes on a list of comments or if it gets put in the plan. Or if, when a comment is, like, you got a list of comments from someone tonight, will those go in the plan? Or will the commission vote on things that they think need to be in it? So I'm kind of confused about where the comments go after they're given. And then the other thing is, too, I know the county uses a lot of our programs and a lot of our facilities, and I just didn't know what effort is being made to encourage the county to increase theirs. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. I'll close the public portion. Back to the commissioners.
So, Mr. Chairman, it might be appropriate to ask Mr. Yule what the process is, because I believe part of Kathy's question was a process issue, and I think it's a good question, so perhaps just speak to the process piece in terms of comments. I'm assuming these are going to be brought back, made part of the record for tonight, and then they'll be brought back when the item comes back to us. I'm presuming that.
Absolutely. It'll be fettered out first by the Recreation and Parks Commission, and that's their job to do that. And then, once they've decided whether that should be part of what comes back to you or not, they'll vote on that. So, it will be, all the comments will be taken in under consideration, and then those that they feel are relevant to the plan will come back to you.
I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if you're interested. So I would move that we recommend to the city council that the 2017 Placerville Area Parks and Facilities Master Plan update and the work and direction taken so far as described is consistent with the city of Placerville's general plan.
I'll second that. Would you, could we have a roll call? Member Friend?
Aye.
Chair List?
Aye.
Member Keeney?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you for your work, and we're now going to move on to item 6.1, which is 166 Placerville Drive Site Plan Review 92-05R. And I'll ask for the staff report.
This request would modify the existing canopy facade that extends along the front, front or west elevation of the commercial building located at 166 Placerville Drive, containing the Rayleigh's supermarket. The canopy facade, again, would wrap around a portion of the north and south building elevations as well. The request would add a new signage facade comprised of a steel framework and exterior-facing composite boards. The composite boards would have an earth-tone color scheme, browns and grays. They would be placed in a random pattern throughout the new facade. In addition, the facade's existing standing seam roof would be painted black. The new design is intended to complement the ongoing interior remodel, if you're familiar with the ongoing remodel at the Rayleigh's store. The request does not involve wall sign modifications, so they are not a component of this request. The elevation provided shows, just in context, where the likely Rayleigh's sign would be located on that new facade. The authority for the application tonight involves a major change to the site plan review approved back in 1992. 92-05 was the file number, approved by the Planning Commission. And that 92 request involved modifications to the building and adding to the commercial building. Under the city's site plan review section, when an approved site plan, if a request comes forward that would alter the appearance, character, or intent of that approved plan, it is considered a major change. Major changes include any change to the building facade or roofline, wall or roof materials, window, and door openings, sign modifications, et cetera. A major change to an approved site plan must be approved by the commission or by city council upon appeal before a building permit for the change is issued. The criteria for evaluating a proposed change to an approved site plan review are the criteria within the site plan review section, Section 1049G of City Code, the general regulations of that code section, the commercial zone, as well as the Development Guide's general architectural design guidelines for building materials and finishes. The request, from staff's perspective, would appear to enhance and update the outward appearance of the existing commercial building through the use of earth-tone colors that are harmonious with the existing split-face block building materials. The limited and restrained scale of the changes to the building canopy facade appear appropriate to the building's mass, the project's site, as well as will provide a positive addition to the Placerville Drive commercial corridor. The request would therefore be consistent with architectural policies within the general plan, the site plan review design criteria of City Code, the architectural character within the 2009 Placerville Drive Development and Implementation Plan, as well as the Development Guide. A component of the city's conditional approval back in 1992, along with the commission's approval of the landscape plan the following year in 1993, was the requirement of the applicant to enter into what's called a landscape maintenance agreement with the city to ensure the ongoing maintenance of landscaping within the parking lot and the slope between the supermarket parking lot and Placerville Drive. City records do not indicate that this condition has been met as required, and this condition will be required to be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit for the requested work that's before you this evening. As I mentioned earlier, building elevations for the request show individual channel-lettered Rayleigh's signs for context only. Therefore, the applicant and property owner's intent regarding the existing and permitted wall signs is not known at this time. Staff will evaluate the future intent and plan for compliance with previously approved master sign plan for the site, and should subsequent sign modifications be deemed by staff to be a major change, per the site plan review regulations, the applicant would be required to submit a major change to the Planning Commission for your approval. Staff therefore recommends that tonight, that you adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings A and B on Page 3 of staff's report, and conditionally approve the major change to the site plan review 92-05R, subject to the conditions of approval provided as attachment B of staff's report. Chair List, that concludes my staff report.
Do we have a representative from Rayleigh's, Inc., here?
How you doing today? I'm Randy Reeves with HMR Architects, project manager, representing Rayleigh's, as well as the architectural firm that has submitted. Business address, 2130 21st Street, Sacramento. I'll basically assist with any questions, but I think it was pretty well presented as to what's doing, basically contemporizing the old eyebrow facade on the Rayleigh's, which I believe everybody has seen throughout the decades, and again, trying to create a contemporary, soft, natural feeling facade to an existing building.
Any questions?
So, I, your scope with regards to the project is design and construction, then I would presume.
We are also involved with a tentative approval as a secondary permit, but yes, we are the architect of record for the permit process.
But you could not speak to why the landscape maintenance agreement had never been executed?
No, and we've seen the condition and have put that forward to the Rayleigh's representative, and that is understood that as a condition of this approval.
And even before the issuance of the building permit, which hopefully will get their attention.
Correct.
Because that's disappointing. Oh, thank you.
I have a question about the, it's actually both the maintenance, landscaping and maintenance, and the color choices. The parking lot is really hot, and part of that is a lack of shade from any kind of large trees that are there. And what you're proposing is, has an element of black standing seam metal roof. It's a small portion of the overall roof of the Rayleigh's building, but it is black. There's no shade, and I think I would like to see, I don't know if we can ask for any particular elements in the landscaping maintenance agreement, but I personally, as a shopper and a resident, feel like we need to cool down that whole area. It's, if you're familiar with urban heat islands, that's really where it starts, where you have black asphalt, you have dark rooflines. Is there any way we can request those kinds of things to be incorporated?
Well, in this case, the applicant is not proposing modifications to the site. The building, yes. It is staff's perspective that to open up the landscape plan, approved by this Planning Commission back in 1993, is really beyond the scope of your review tonight. Commission back in 1993, is really beyond the scope of your review tonight. Had the applicant been proposing, perhaps, new structures or new elements out in the parking area, I think then we could have made a connection to requiring additional shade trees. I can't speak to what the city's requirements for shading back in 1993 were, but I understand the concern. I do shop at that store. I think we all would love to park in front of, or park below or underneath trees that would provide shade. I think what this body could do is encourage, strongly encourage, with as most kind words that you could possibly give to the applicant and the property owner, to provide additional shading, perhaps provide additional planter islands for that purpose, because that way I think both the customers and the city would benefit from those improvements to the site.
Thank you for clarifying that, and I, as a representative of Rayleigh's and the architect, I would like to ask you to forward my comments to them, and I'll try to do that also on my own in a different venue. I think that what you've proposed is really quite nice and in keeping with the other updates that I have seen inside the store, what I think you're planning there. So, as it stands, I think it's a good design, but we do have those other issues that we need to deal with on a different venue.
I just wanted to explain that the canopy itself is actually a shade structure to the front roofing being, the reason that, and this is not the only store that this has been looked at, Pleasanton, there's a new store in the Rancho Cortova area, they, as a general outside of even our architectural office, have looked at this, if you want to call it rebranding, throughout a majority of their stores. The rationale for the darker roof was to do it against the wood, the wood laminated texture and everything to actually bring it out rather than the older color roof. So, that was the rationale for the roofing color.
One comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just on the note regarding landscaping. Staff can commit to you that we will make a thorough review of the approved landscaping plan that was originally approved, and if we find that there are any unhealthy or dying trees, we will require that those trees be replaced.
Thank you. Just before we go to public comment, was a permit pulled by Rayleigh's to put in the e-parking spaces?
The e-cart, yes, that came before the Commission, I want to say, well, it was during my time here, I can't remember the year, but, yes.
Okay. We'll now open it up for public comment. If you have a public comment, please, if you so choose, state your name.
I'm Diane Marillo, and for 40 years I've owned property on Placerville Drive and 37 of it. I'm a neighbor of Rayleigh's, whether it's on the south or the west. And we worked really hard in the late 80s owning property there when the city was doing a beautiful job of widening Placerville Drive and putting in Ray Lawyer intersection and all those great things, and Kathy Leishman and the community pride people really stressed and got the city to approve a landscape district through that whole area. And when Rayleigh's updated in the 93 area, they had beautiful plants and flowing out of the planter boxes by the front doors, they had trees everywhere, they had a gorgeous landscape like they were supposed to to the road, and it has gone so bad for over 15 years. And there's homeless that are just sliding and throwing their garbage down through there to get to that church place on Green Valley Road that picks them up for food, and it's just a fire hazard, a trap, which is the same below Wells Fargo, they've cleaned up a little bit recently. And it's just really disappointing to see that the city patrol people aren't keeping the A boards, the flags, the banner signs, and landscaping cited. Issue citations to these people and start charging fees. Maybe you can make more than on parking meters, because all Placerville Drive has been pretty well neglected. And when you look at the beautiful job that's just done there on the GM dealership, the stark white slick clean with the black trim, and then the Toyota dealership, the Chrysler dealership, and it's just a great thing that Rayleigh's is staying there with Amazon going, you know, selling food, and they're going to put more money in this community, create more jobs in this community, and I think it's wonderful. My purpose here tonight as their neighbor, I got to look at that ugly bank, and I just hope, I'm so thrilled that you people noticed it and that it is on Page 3 of the other terms and conditions, and I wish you would go back to the 93 original site plan of the landscape requirement and have them get all the trees replaced and the greenery replaced that was on the parking lot areas and around the front of the building areas, along with clean up that bank and keep it watered and improved and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Kathy Leishman. I haven't seen Diane Marillo in years. She used to put an angel on the corner of Green Valley Road and Placerville Drive at Christmas time. I wanted to give you a little history of the landscaping, because it was something that always frustrated me. I was on the City Council at the time, and the project had been originally approved by the Planning Commission with more landscaping. And then, Rayleigh's came to the City Council to ask to reduce some of the landscaping on the site. The intention of the City Council was, because at that time there was no sidewalk, the Placerville Drive improvements hadn't been completed and there was no sidewalk, and so the intention was that, once the sidewalk went in, that Rayleigh's would landscape all the way down to the sidewalk. However, when the motion was made, that part was not included, and Rayleigh's was able to remove some of the trees that had originally been approved for the site, but the landscaping down to the sidewalk never went in because it didn't have to. And it's very weedy, and I know during the gold panning championships, I think the city went in and cleaned that up, because a lot of the events were at the fair. For the e-card approvals, I think I read in the staff report the year that that was done, I think I was probably at that meeting too, just in case they could do something about the landscaping. So, I was really happy to hear that the city is going to review the original landscaping plan, and more shade and better trees on the site would be a big improvement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, going to close the public hearing, bring it back to Commissioners. Comments and questions?
I just want to thank Commissioner Keeney for her comments regarding the heat islands and all of that, because it's true, and one of the things I really enjoy is the parking lots that have decent shade, and that the planting was oriented in such a way that you get the shade, because you have to orient it properly to do that. So, I do appreciate, that'd be nice. Whatever we can do would be helpful at that site.
Thank you. And Pierre, I'd be happy to help you look over that if you need another pair of eyes to see, and also, I think we need to determine who's really responsible for that downslope area, and perhaps, you know, I know money's tight, but if that's actually somehow city's responsibility, find out who's really responsible. Give us a good area to maybe plant some shade that could help that parking lot if it's actually city responsibility. Maybe it's just kind of fallen between the cracks since Placerville Drive improvements and other things that have gone on.
At this point, at this point in time, it is staff's understanding that it is Rayleigh's that are responsible for maintaining that landscaped area below the parking lot to edge of sidewalk. And so, once we enter into the landscaping maintenance agreement, well then we'll have that, we'll have the agreement in place, and then Rayleigh's then will know that that's their responsibility to take care of that. If they don't for any reason, then it allows the city to be able to hire a contractor, and then we can charge Rayleigh's directly for the costs. And it's my understanding that's going to be resolved prior to the issuance of building permit. That's correct, and I can't speak to what happened before. I mean, I'm not going to, you know, place blame on the applicant, because staff should have ensured that that landscape agreement was signed and recorded prior to finaling that original permit back in 1993, and for whatever reason that didn't happen, we discovered that when we were looking at getting Rayleigh's to clean up that portion of the landscaping prior to the world gold panning championship, and I personally met with the manager of Rayleigh's, and he had committed to go ahead and do that cleanup, and I saw, lo and behold, I saw it all cleaned up, it looked fairly nice, somebody definitely gone through, and I was going to thank him, but then I found out from our own staff that it was our, it was our community services staff that went out and actually did the cleanup, so. But I think moving forward, if we get that landscaping agreement in place, I think we'll be in good shape, and as I said earlier, staff is committed, and I appreciate the Planning Commissioner's assistance, if, she probably has a background in landscaping, to take a hard look at the existing condition of that landscaping so that it meets the minimum requirements of that original approved landscaping plan. I'd just like to comment on that, though, that based on the comments in the public hearing, we shouldn't get too terribly excited, because it sounds like the agreement, the final requirements may have been watered down significantly, so it'd be interesting to see what finally comes out of that. Yeah, that agreement would be based on maintaining the original approved landscaping plan.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
So, the motion would be to adopt the recommended action?
Right.
I'll make a motion to adopt the staff report as part of the public record and find, agree with the findings in Section 2, that this is categorically exempt from SEQA. Do I need to read all this?
No.
No, I do, and, let's see, staff report, and then that the permit is subject to the conditions in attachment B, as outlined in our packet.
Second the motion.
All right. We have a roll call.
Member Keeney.
Aye.
Member Friend.
Aye.
Chair List.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to 6.2. Property located at 692 and 696 Main Street, Site Plan Review 17-4. We have a staff report.
Yes, this request would involve the removal of existing commercial glass door and two aluminum slider windows on the east elevation of the commercial building located at 692 696 Main Street. In addition, replace that glass door with a two-panel door. Slider windows are to be filled in with siding to match the existing lap siding on the east, north, and a portion of the south elevation with light-kind material. The request also involves the removal of an aluminum slider window on the south elevation at the southeast corner and replace it with a single-hung vinyl window. The request also involves modifications to the lower portion of the building, which is the portion that's closest to the upper Main Street commercial corridor. Improvements there involve the removal of two existing octagon windows, excuse me, that face upper main, and install three windows in their former locations. You can see their former locations in an old photo that we found as Image 1 of staff's report, and install a smaller window where the, one of the doors for that lower-level business once existed. The lower-level improvement also involves the installation of a new fabric awning, which would be attached over the existing mansard roof. The subject site is basically a two-story structure with a raised basement on a parcel of approximately 1/3 acre. It has been surveyed under the city's Historic Resources Inventory, and the structure was originally built before 1888 as a residence for Samuel L. Turner. City records indicate the structure had three addresses, 692, 694, and 696 Main Street over the years, and contained several types of commercial and service uses during the 60s, 70s, and early 80s, including a barber, Barbara, excuse me, a barber, or a beauty salon, a real estate office, a custom stained glass business. We're just giving you an idea of some of the uses that have occurred there. In 1984, the restaurant, or the residence was converted into a restaurant, and in 1985, the basement stores, which was 692 and 694 Main Street, were converted into a lounge/bar for the upstairs restaurant. This, although the structure is not located within a city historic district, as I mentioned just a second ago, the property was surveyed under the city's Historic Resource Inventory as a local significant resource. The survey dates back to 1984 and states that the structure's architectural style is Victorian farmhouse with a southern influence. Characteristic features of the structure are its cross-axial and cross-gable roof construction, and its covered porch or veranda that wraps 3/4 of the first floor level. Staff analyzed the request for consistency with the General Plan Community Design section, the design provisions under the Site Plan Review Criteria of the zoning code, and the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. The request is consistent with Goal B of the General Plan Community Design section in that the visual quality of proposed exterior changes that involve windows, doors, siding, and a new awning promote an enhancement of the, an existing commercial building listed on the city's Historic Resource Inventory. The requested activities would also serve to protect the integrity of the Samuel L. Turner Building, a city historic resource, therefore meeting the purposed intent and criteria of the zoning ordinance sections 1049, the Site Plan Review section, 10410, which is the historic buildings in the city, that includes the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation as a design criteria, and the request would complement the site as well as the surrounding area. Staff recommends the Commission take the action on Pages 4 and 5 of staff's report, which includes adopting the staff report as a part of the public record, make findings of fact A, B, C, and D on Page 4 of the staff report, and approve Site Plan Review 17-04, subject to the conditions of approval provided as attachment B. Both the applicant and the property owner are in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. If we may.
I'm sorry, there's a driver's license laying out by the front door. Just let you people take in charge of the, someone's driver's license.
Thank you, Diane.
May we hear from the representative or, and the owner?
Hi, I'm Tony Farnes from NorCal Roofing, and I've been hired by Ernest Harrison to perform these upgrades on the property. We recently replaced the roof and the gutters just after he closed ethrow on the property, and now we're, you know, trying to open it up, make a little more light downstairs in the basement, and make it look a lot more presentable from the street.
Hello, my name is Ernest Harrison. I'm the owner of 692 696 Main Street. What I've already done with replacing the roof, replaced the balcony cover with real cedar instead of trying to go with lesser materials, I thought it was the right thing to do. Most of the gingerbread fretwork has been removed from probably 150 years of remodeling. It's my intention to bring that all back and make it a really nice thing to view on Main Street.
Couple of questions I have. I noticed this does not ask for anything about signage. Is there going to be a upstairs-downstairs businesses, or what's the, if you may?
For now, downstairs is being leased out as a bar wine, or beer and wine bar in the near future. the near future. I have it leased for a three-year contract, and this is part of the remodeling that needs to happen before they open up. But they've transferred their existing licenses that they have here in town.
Okay, and upstairs?
I'm not convinced yet of what to do with it yet, except replace the fancy, like I said, the fret work and the gingerbread on the exterior.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know what to do with it yet. But it's not gonna be a restaurant, that's for sure, like it was. It's all been, that's why I'm getting rid of the glass door entrance on the side where the car wash is. And one day, I would love to be able to buy the car wash and make that some type of area to maybe make the places a venue, like a destination place. Would be my biggest dream, but that's far away.
My neighbor was hoping it was gonna be a steakhouse upstairs, so I had to ask.
Is this gonna be the cigar shop?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, great.
Beer and wine as the priority is what they're, along with cigars.
Sure, okay, great. So, this is the shop that was at Broadway and Schnell approximate, or Broadway and what the hell is that street?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. Across from Der Wiener Sinsel.
Correct.
And it moved down. Okay, yeah, great. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the attention to some of the historic restoration.
This'll be my third Victorian, restore my third Victorian this one.
Okay.
And I've had much bigger projects than this one.
Thank you.
Your plan is to put the fabric awning over the mansard roof?
That's correct.
And what, can you talk a little bit about the durability?
It's gonna have a steel frame to it, so it'll be very strong.
And how about the fabric coloring?
Fabric.
Or covering, is that gonna fade?
It's gonna be strong canvas, like other materials that you might see around.
So, it should last, be very durable?
You know what, I asked about that, and they only give a ten-year warranty on it.
Okay.
And then, but it's easy to be replaced after the framework is up.
So, the framework is part of what you're gonna do to cover, you're not gonna remove the wood?
No.
Mansard?
If we do remove the wood, it'll be with the same comp tile as the roof, but you won't even be able to see that because the awning will be in front of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'll open it up to the public. Any other comments from the public?
Doug Zeller, real estate broker here in town and a friend of Mr. Harrison, and he's done a remarkable job on another house here in town fixing up from, you know, deferred maintenance and ugly paint and everything else, and he really is attentive to detail. And everything he does turns out nice. I mean, he doesn't just cut corners. So, he's done another house over here in town and basically taken one step at a time of making the town look better, and he wants to really fix up that Victorian over there so it's something that we can all be proud of, and, you know, just taking it one step at a time as he can. And I have a lot of faith and encouragement, seeing what he's already done, that he's gonna do the right thing with this house.
Thank you. Anyone else? Back to staff.
Staff has a couple of comments on the comments received thus far, both from the commission and the public. The question earlier by Chair List regarding future tenancy and signage, staff has captured on its condition number seven, which would require that any future business signage for tenant occupancy would require a building permit, and therefore must comply with the city's sign regulations, as well as the guidelines of the City of Placerville Development Guide. The second comment is related to the orientation of the building as it faces Main Street is, for lack of a better word, a north aspect. Therefore, getting to the comment regarding the durability, because sunlight may, for the majority of the year, that awning may not receive as direct sunlight as it would if it faced south across the street, although that's not really a complete answer to your question, but that should help with the durability of the product. The fire code would require that that material be, you know, fire restrictive or fire retardant, thank you. So, that's my comments.
Thank you.
Can I ask, could you elaborate if it did, didn't, if it did fail, does the city have recourse for the property owner to replace that so that it's still, it doesn't become blighted?
Yeah, the approval, if the commission so chooses tonight for the proposed changes to the building, the property owner and their applicant would be required to maintain the approved elevation as approved by this body, if it, so, if it is so approved this evening. So, yes, if this awning were to fail, or windows to be broken, or et cetera, then, yes, the city can compel the property owner and/or their tenants to make those changes so that the exterior appearance meet the intent and purpose and approved, an approval that this body would grant. So, yes, if that were to happen, the city could initiate a code enforcement procedure, and if the city did not get compliance with this or any other condition, then one of our recourses would be to bring the whole action back to you to revoke the entire approval, and the city could invoke removal of all the improvements that are substandard or failing, if that were to be the decision of the commission.
Just to be clear, we would have to add that to the conditions of approval, Mr. Painter?
I'm sorry, the director was asking me a question.
We would have to add that as a condition of the approval, like in attachment B, or that's already covered by city policies and code enforcement?
Well, the Site Plan Review ordinance calls out mechanisms for staff and/or the applicants to adhere to, and so, instead of quoting every section of city code, the, there is a kind of a catch-all condition that the applicant would be required to meet all relevant conditions and policies and standards in the city code.
Okay, thank you.
One quick question for the applicant. You don't have to get up to answer this. Around town, there are a number of buildings that have a little plaque that says this building was, in this case, would be the Samuel L. Turner Building, built in such-and-such-a-date. Do you have plans to do something like that on your building? What, I'm sorry, would you, I'm, we're on, we're on the record here.
That's fine, I understand. It's my plan to make a collage on the interior of the building for people to view and gain education about Mr. Turner, and how he was an engineer and built a large railroad in Rio de Janeiro, and all the information that I've already learned about him. And they even have his wedding or marriage license in the Eldorado County, you know, they have that on file. So, I was gonna plan on doing that, but if you suggest me to make something for the exterior, I have no plan doing it, I'm going to already make a plaque that says circa 1860 when it was built, and Turner House.
I just have noticed a lot of people who walk around town, and they, you see them stopping and looking at the one in front of the old city hall and other places, and I think that's a neat addition to this, to this community.
Absolutely, yeah. It's gonna be a really special place.
Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Yes?
Staff has one more comment. I want to direct the commission to attachment B of this staff report, and under item one, there is a, it's not a bullet, it's a dash, it's the third one down, and it states exterior facia improvements, and there's an erroneous reference to the previous item on tonight's agenda. Staff would respectfully request that that whole line be struck.
Anything else from the commission? I'll entertain a motion?
I believe Commissioner Keeney is on her roll tonight, so I'll defer.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the staff report as presented, and make the findings of fact as listed in sections, Section Two, A through D, and approve the Site Plan Review seventeen dash oh four for this, the changes in this structure, and including the conditions of approval for, as are provided in attachment B.
Second, that outstandingly well-presented motion.
I was able to flip to page four quickly.
We have a roll call, please.
Member Keeney?
Aye.
Member List?
Aye.
Member Friend?
Aye.
He's chair pro tem, by the way.
He's chair pro tem, just, isn't he?
Temporary chair, yes.
Moving on, we are now at six point three. Consider zoning change, zoning ordinance amends relating to second dwelling units, zoning change, ZC seventeen dash zero one. Staff report, please.
Tonight, staff is requesting that the commission make a recommendation to city council concerning text amendments to the city's regulation of what we formerly called the secondary dwelling units, and as a reference to the most recent changes to government code, they are now considered or called accessory dwelling units. The request also involves amendments to conform to the changes of government code, as I mentioned, pertaining to the development of accessory dwelling units and associated provisions related to parking, design, and development standards. The, there were two assembly bills that were related to these changes in city code. I'm sorry, one was an Assembly Bill 2299, the second was a Senate Bill 1069, which went into effect on January one of this year. The state legislature in the past, and echoed by these changes, have declared the importance of addressing California's housing needs in its action to amend the state housing law, that ADUs are a valuable form of housing in California by providing additional rental housing stock. ADUs provide housing for family members, students, the elderly, the disabled, and that homeowners who create ADUs benefit from potentially added rental income. By adopting amendments to the city code that staff's presenting, not only would the amendments conform to the recent changes in state law, but would help support the Housing Element Policy C3, which encourages the use of regulatory incentives as tools to assist affordable housing development. Staff is recommending that the commission consider the proposed changes, which specifically would add definitions of terms to the zoning code. The changes would replace in its entirety the secondary dwelling unit section of the zoning code, and replacing the title with accessory dwelling units. Would also amend all references within the zoning code of that term, secondary dwelling unit, and replace the term with accessory dwelling unit. Some background regarding ADUs in the city, as well as the state statute. Under the changes to city, excuse me, to state law, any existing municipal codes that do not meet the requirements of the state law shall be considered null and void. And what that means is our current ordinance is null and void. That doesn't mean that an applicant or a property owner could come to the city tomorrow and request a ministerial permit for an ADU. If that were to happen, or up and until the time that these changes, or changes that are amended by you and/or the commission, before that ordinance goes into effect, then the city would be obligated to regulate and rule on the proposal according to the provisions in the state statute. The, as for the number of units the city has as far as secondary units, the data before 2008 is rather difficult to obtain, but I can tell you that since 2008, the city has issued a total of five building permits for secondary units, as they were once called. So, these, the Assembly Bill and the Senate Bill would require the city to impose standards and regulations in its ADU ordinance, as well as designate certain areas within the jurisdiction where the ADUs may be permitted, impose standards on parking, height, setback, lot coverage, landscaping, architectural review, minimum unit size, et cetera. Regulations by the state also allow the city to provide provisions that would help prevent adverse impacts on properties that are listed on the California Register of Historic Places. The regulations would, must provide that ADUs do not exceed the allowable density on the lot for which the unit is located, and that ADUs are for residential use, that it's consistent with the existing general plan and zoning designation. The state regulations would require that ADUs comply with all of the following. Number one, the unit is not intended for sale separate from the primary residence and may be rented. The lot is zoned for single-family or multifamily use and contains an existing single-family dwelling. The ADU is either attached to the existing dwelling or located within the living area of the existing dwelling on the site, or it could be detached from the existing dwelling and located on the same lot.
Mr. Painter, if you would permit me to interrupt you right there, and since there's nobody, I think I will bother. In reading number three, it seems the only way you could violate this provision is if the ADU is built in a tree.
Well.
So, it's either attached to the existing dwelling, or located within the living area of the existing dwelling, or detached from the existing dwelling and located on the same lot. That only leaves a tree. So, tree houses are not covered. I have one more in a moment.
This language is taken basically right out of, out of what?
Oh, yes, I'm sure it was.
But I understand the comic relief here at this late hour. Do you have another one you want?
Well, when you get to it, when you get to it.
You're waiting for my number. Number four, the increased floor area of an attached ADU shall not exceed 50% of the existing living area of the primary home, with a maximum increase in floor area of 1,200 square feet. The total area of floor space for a detached ADU shall not exceed 1,200 square feet. No passageway shall be required in conjunction with the construction of an ADU.
Ah, the daily double. Does that mean you can build something without a hallway? Or what is, what passageway are they talking about? Is that a connection between the two? What is this referencing?
That's, that's what we would call it. In fact, that definition is included in the draft ordinance coming before.
What, hallway, or, I'm not sure what the "it" is referring to.
Yeah, it's more or less the, a way to get to that unit.
Oh, okay.
From another location.
All right.
No setback shall be required for an existing garage that is converted to an ADU, and a setback of no more than five feet from the side or rear lot lines shall be required for an ADU that is constructed above an existing garage. Number eight, local building code requirements that apply to detached, as to detached dwellings as appropriate, so local government regulations apply. Building code. Number nine, parking requirements as follows. Parking shall not exceed one parking space per unit or per bedroom. So, the state allows us to use either-or metric there. These parking spaces may be provided as tandem parking on the existing driveway of that primary residence. Off-street parking shall be permitted in setback areas in locations determined by the local agency or through tandem parking. And there are some other provisions related to that as far as topographical or fire and life safety. Parking requirements shall not apply to any of the following ADU types: if the ADU is located within one-half mile of public transit, if the ADU is located within an architectural and historically significant district. Well, that certainly has some bearing with the city, as the city has four distinct and separate residential historic districts. If the ADU is part of the existing primary residence or an existing accessory structure, parking requirement shall not apply when on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the applicant or occupant of the ADU. I don't believe that provision applies. believe that provision applies, because we do not necessarily have on-street parking permits, that I'm aware of. When, other parking requirements shall not apply when a car-share vehicle is located within one block of the ADU.
How would you know that?
I don't know how staff is supposed to understand or even collect that information, but perhaps it would be a burden upon the applicant to provide that detail when they come in for their building permit. But I appreciate, appreciate the comment. Number ten, when a garage, carport, or covered parking structure is demolished in conjunction with the construction of an ADU, and the local agency requires that those off-street parking spaces be replaced, the replacement spaces may be located in any configuration on the lot as the ADU, including but not limited as covered spaces, uncovered spaces, tandem spaces, or by the use of mechanical automobile parking lifts. I think they're talking about San Francisco here.
That is so incredible. And I would like, would just like people to keep this in context of an item we're going to have at a future date regarding yard usage, because I could really see this coming into play.
Number eleven, the local agency, gee, the city, may not require the applicant to install a new or separate utility connection between the ADU and the utility or related connection, or impose a related connection fee or capacity charge for that ADU that would be contained within the existing space of a single-family residence or an accessory structure. Has independent exterior access for the existing residence, and the side and rear setbacks are sufficient for fire safety. Number twelve, fire sprinklers for ADU shall not be required if they are not required for the primary residence. Staff's draft ordinance includes, maybe not verse and phrase each of those provisions, but they are inclusive in the document. Attachment A is the draft proposed ordinance, and Attachment B is the strike-through of the existing code regulations, which would be replaced with this new ordinance. And once again, staff's proposal tonight is to amend Section Four of Chapter One of Title Ten, adding definitions of terms which are in the ordinance. Replace in its entirety Section Twelve, the secondary dwelling unit, section of Chapter Four of Title Ten. Replace it with a title of Section Twelve, accessory dwelling units. Amendments tonight would also amend references to the secondary dwelling unit language in, throughout Chapter Five, the zoning regulations, replacing that term with accessory dwelling units where it's found under the various zoning districts that the city has within that Chapter Five.
Can I bring staff's attention to page roman numeral four, ten B? Dealing with parking.
Are you finished with your report before we go to his question?
Well, to wrap it up, there are a couple of provisions that state law does allow for the city to, to include in their ordinances. And the city has retained one of the subsections, if I can finish, one of the subsections related to improvements within a historic district, one of the city's established historic districts. The state law does allow for the city to provide a procedure and mechanism for site plan review as it relates to exterior alterations within existing structures within historic districts that are visible from the street. The other provision relates to the guidelines and criteria used for that analysis for those ADUs that are visible from the street in a historic district, and that includes the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, as well as the site plan review criteria and the Historical Buildings in the City Code section. Yeah, I'm just about done. This request tonight, in staff's opinion, the proposed ordinance is not subject to the provisions of SEQA, because the legislature granted a statutory exemption under SEQA Guidelines, Section one-five-two-eight-two H, and therefore it is statutorily exempt from SEQA. Staff believes that proposed amendments would bring local regulations into consistency with the recent changes in state law, would support the existing city policy which encourages the use of regulatory incentives as tools to assist affordable housing development. Staff recommends that the commission recommend that the city council approve the ordinance amending Placerville City Code. With that, that concludes my staff report. So, I might have to ask the member to please repeat the question.
So, I'm going to item ten. Our, this is the city's proposed requirements on page roman numeral four. Parking. One off-street parking space is required, except as provided below, which was the exact language you read. In addition to the required parking for the main dwelling unit. So, you have the main dwelling unit, then there's parking requirements for that, and then we have this ADU, and it's got parking requirements. It has to be one, as a minimum, I presume. No, we're not, okay, so one off-street parking. It may be provided in the following configurations and areas in addition of the areas allowed for the main dwelling. In tandem, one car located directly behind another car, including single-car driveway leading to two required parking spaces for the main dwelling unit, or within required interior side yards. And I am just looking at some of the graphics that staff provided to us for our consideration of yard usage. And it just seems to me that this could be in conflict with what may have been proposed, not approved and adopted, mind you, but proposed. And I mean, I'm, I'm seeing some things that might drive other people, might annoy them, and I'm just wondering if staff contemplated that when they wrote this language.
Well, the language that's before you is a provision, or provisions plural, that the city must include in its ordinance.
Ten, eleven is, because you read that straight out of the, but I don't know that ten is, is it? Ten seems to be...
The code does, the state law does allow for the city to provide and require parking, but if there are exceptions that the applicant can apply to, the laundry list that I read earlier, then the city cannot require that additional stall. Does that help clarify?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at the state's language, number nine, and I mean, I think the whole thing is silly, frankly. But, okay, so I'm not proposing a change, I'm just making the observation. And so, just to be sure I understand, Mr. Chairman, really, our adoption of this, or our recommendation that the council adopt the changes as proposed is simply to bring us into conformity with what the state is mandating.
I would concur. That's, that's the request tonight, yes.
It is my understanding that this was proposed to go in January one, two thousand and seventeen. And I'm not, that's not a criticism of you, because I'm dealing with another, another county and this very issue. And I think that was mentioned before, that it was January one, two thousand and seventeen.
State's provision, provisions plural, went into effect on January one of this year. And because on that date, the city did not have an ordinance that meets the intent and purpose and the requirements of the state, the recent changes in state law, made our current regulations null and void. So, as I mentioned earlier, we don't get lots of requests for these, and it was staff's opinion that we could work on this over time. Since January one, we have received one request, and that was issued. And it met the current language as recently modified by those two acts of the legislature.
Okay. Anything else from commissioners?
I recommend that we, recommend the city council that they adopt the zoning changes and language as proposed by staff.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Chair Pro Tem, List.
Aye.
Member Friend?
Aye.
Member Keeney?
Aye.
Moving on to matters from commissioners and staff. Are there any matters from commissioners?
Only that I will not be present at our next meeting on the nineteenth.
Neither will I. Matters before from staff, anything?
Up to the meeting tonight, I do have two items, well, for the two members who won't be here. We do have staff reports for the two action items that will be heard on that evening. An agenda has not been formally approved yet, not knowing what the outcome of tonight's meeting was going to be. And of course, have not completed minutes of tonight's meeting, so those will be coming to you shortly. But, like I said, the two items on the, for the meeting of the nineteenth, those can be picked up at the end of the meeting tonight. At some point in the near future, the city, when we have all five members here, we will have election of officers so that we can formally have a chair and vice chair, as well as take a group photo, maybe even talk about bylaws and things like that. So, that's all I have. Maybe the director has some additional comments.
Well, yeah, so actually, because of the absence of at least two members that we know of, on our agenda for the nineteenth was supposed to be consideration of the yard usage and the other things. And so, that, our action at the last meeting was to continue it to that date certain. So, the question is, how can we continue that item beyond? Because I think it's, it's really important that all members be present for that. And if I have to, I mean, I'll, I'll change my flight plan so that I, I'm here for that. But I would prefer to not have to do that, so.
Staff, staff will make the request to continue that item, but it'll be up to the, of course, the three commissioners then to approve that continuance.
I would only hope that I'm quite certain that they will.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.
Thank you.